We're supposed to break down the happy birthday.
We might. Happy birthday Susan.
I can't get down six feet from there.
Where's Ron?
Are we supposed to break down the happy birthday?
We might. Happy birthday Susan.
Safe save.
I'd call this meeting of the land's planning board's order. Can we stand and pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley almost showed the roll call that present Kim out there. This is not only agenda, but if this time I'd like to remember Charlie Brown. He was a member of our planning board for a number of years. And he was chairman for a number of years. And he has no other way because he passed about a week ago.
Last Monday.
Last Monday. And just like to ask you to have a moment. I want his honor and his memory. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the minutes for March of this year, March 17th. I remember reading over them. It was Beth Roll Missellings. Shilling on the first page, item number three, roll call. Susan Shirley, Kim Swan. Vicky is no E.
The two I's.
Two I's and no E. And underneath the guest. To buy the Stewart. That's a T-H-A, not T-U-T. I believe Jasmine. Did anybody else see anything in reading through it? Okay, I'll entertain the motion to accept these minutes as written with changes. Motion made by Mark S. O'Neal.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, our old business. This is the carryover from last meeting on the 17th of March. And we, at that meeting, we were discussing the new subdivision plat for Laurel Garden subdivision. Shirley, can you take up that item and kind of bring us up to speed about where we are?
Yes, Madam Chair. You have, we've been discussing a post seven lot subdivision off of, on the corner of West Laurel and North Side Street. At your March meeting, we heard presentations from the developer's representative regarding storm waters, street construction. And then you had some questions and answers from the public regarding lot sizes, placement of the houses, buffers, some other items like that. On the actual staff report, there really isn't, hasn't been any changes since then. Although the developer representative probably will discuss in more detail. There have been some meetings with the neighbors. We did have a Zoom meeting two weeks ago, of which there were about 12 people, I think, that participated in that. Interesting occupation. So, and I think there have been some more meetings with representatives since then. But basically, the subdivision is, as it's presented to you in your packet with that preliminary site plan, which is what we're talking about, is a preliminary plan. Hasn't changed. I did bring, there's a couple of copies of the proposed construction drawings. They are around. You have, you have one up on your desk and there's one there. If there are any questions about that. I also put on your desk, there's a little memo from the town's consulting engineer recording some questions about the stormwater requirements and what might be required on that. It's really just for information for you. So, you know, as, you know, we made the plans, the plat has gone through at least two to three reviews by the town staff. Public Works Director, the Fire Chief, the Water and Sewer Band, and the town engineer. The developer has secured a soil and erosion control permit from Rowan County. Driveway permits would be secured from the town since the proposed road is to be a state, to be a town maintained road. There are some concessions that, and recommendations that were put in, like widening the road out from 35 feet to 50 to meet the DOT standards. Because all roads and subdivisions have to be the DOT standards. Agrees to relocate the existing sewer line and manhole within the prescribed street. Developer agrees to install a paved 20-foot access space between lots five and six for turnarounds for emergency and service vehicles. You wouldn't have a traditional cul-de-sac at the end of the road. This would be, it'll have to be done as some kind of easement that is dedicated as part of the street work. Developer agrees to create a homeowners association to maintain, only maintain any stormwater structures and buffer. Developer agrees to make provisions to connect the existing driveway. There's a, two driveway exits across the street into the new street. And developer agrees to install or to reimburse the town for the required waters and sewer, street lights, and electric service lines and all the conduits and connections that are required for it. Just some background information. Based on the subdivision ordinance, which, the subdivision and the zoning ordinance are tied together. You cannot create lots that don't meet the subdivision, that don't meet the subdivision ordinance. But in addition, it has, they have to meet the zoning ordinance. One of the requirements of the zoning ordinance is that you must have access to a publicly maintained street. That's what the provision is about creating, either creating a street or having access to an existing street. So, you know, based on the conversations that you had in March, you all decided that you wanted a little bit more information and you wanted some, you know, public input from other parties. So, basically, today you're down. The staff does recommend that you approve this preliminary plat. The next step would be that it would go to the town board. They are the ultimate authority on this. They have to approve not only the preliminary plat, but also the construction drawings. And only upon those approvals would any actual construction, like land clearing activities, take care of. And then, when they get ready to sell the lots, then you'll see the final plaques will come back through, to you again, and also to the town board. So, this is a multi-step process. I guess this is not the end of it by any means, so you may...
Will we also see the construction plan for the houses in here?
Not traditionally, you don't, you know, whatever's worked out as far as, you know, kind of went through this last time. Local governments are sort of tied to the fact that they can't, without the developers agreeing, have too much control, our design standards and architecture. You can control the height, the bulk of it, which would be the lot coverage, or the orientation, and that's about it, without an agreement of the developer. In other words, they could make concessions to do that, and there's been some discussion that that might occur. But, you know, this is, this is not a conditional use. This is not a rezoning. This is really a typical subdivision process. Subdivision means dividing the land. That's really all you're being asked to sort of look at.
So, would you agree, though, that the, that neighborhood has developed far different than this 1939 plat that we are going by?
Well, you know, there, there is a house across the street and there's some houses behind, you're talking about on Laurel Street. There are some houses on either blocks of it either way. It's not densely populated, you know, with houses there are. There are some houses there. There is a good-sized house that's right across the street.
So you would agree that the houses have developed larger than what this 1939 plat that we are suggested to go by, is developed far different from what this right here shows him planning in 1939?
Well, you could look at it two ways. The house across the street was initially on a much larger lot. And I think it's actually listed on your, your lot. I think it says Elizabeth Lynn on it.
But would you say the homes have developed on larger lots and the homes have developed larger than what we see on this plat?
Well, you put me in a position...
Just a yes or no?
Yes or no. They're, they're probably more densely populated than you're seeing in that neighborhood, yes. There are more, there are more, more houses in a smaller area than you see across the street or behind. Or even across Side Street a little bit. But they line up as they move along, yeah.
You're saying there's more than...
No, I'm saying this proposed development is...
Shows a denser population.
Has a denser population than the one across the street or the ones behind.
Yes. Thank you.
The pattern. But it, but the lots meet the current zoning. As far as minimum lot size, if they're a little bit, actually a little bit larger than the minimum lot size. They meet the lot width and they meet the setback form.
And I just had a quick question. I know that in the past, that the properties were told that they couldn't be subdivided in the past. And that the setbacks were supposed to be 40 feet off of the street and 40 feet off of Laurel. This is the previous homeowner that had bought a property and wanted to build off of. And I know that they were also told that the home was supposed to blend and complement with the homes that were already in the area. And these go totally against the homes that are already there. Most of the ones that I had looked at have been built in the early 1900s. So, these homes that are going to be put in there are just kind of little things dumped in the middle of homes that are not complementary to the homes that are around them.
I heard a similar comment at the Zoom meeting, and I'm not aware of, you know, where that information came from. The area is not in a watershed, which would be the one thing that would, might prohibit the subdivision of the lot. Like I said, the subdivision ordinance says, well, you can subdivide lots provided they meet the ordinance completely, which is, you know, lot sizes, setbacks, and they have access to a publicly maintained road. So, you know, I, I don't know what, I, I did hear that question before, but I wasn't aware of where it came from or what the circumstances was. Because this is not in a watershed, so there wouldn't be any restriction on necessarily, like there was some kind of these restriction or something. I, I don't know.
According to this plat, then those lots are a 40-foot setback. Am I reading that right?
That is correct.
Can anybody just speak up? I mean, I heard someone back here. I mean, it's...
Uh, you're, excuse me, you're supposed to be using the microphones.
Madam Chair, are we still with the board discussing this until we recognize the board? Okay.
No, that was, that was my, that was all my questions for that, for now. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Mr. Lockweir, I see you're illustrious smiling face. I assume you're not here for entertainment tonight.
No, ma'am. I, uh, what I'd like the board to do, thank you for recognizing, is that there was a, a memo sent by Mr. Wes Webb. That stated September the 11th, 2019. And he makes comments about this development. In the very first, first one, number one, he says, "The area labeled Laurel Street appears, appears to be an unopened, unopened right of way. Permission to re-get grade this area and have the town accept the road for maintenance needs to be reviewed by the town attorney." I was shown this and I reviewed it. I commented almost immediately. And my comment was quite simply, "That is not a public street." It's not a public street. Now, I can understand that someone hearing me comment so quickly. My question, well, how did he know that? He didn't even research. This is not the first time I've looked at this question in this neighborhood. And it has been said time and time again, that plat and map. I've heard those terms used interchangeably. I recognize that, of course, one form of dedication is the recording of a map or a plat for subdivision development. That's your black letter law. However, what we have here is neither of those. One of the other things, it's very basic with black letter law. You can even submit, am I vibrating?
You're good, you're good. Very good, just good.
You can, you can submit something to the town. If this were a plat or map, and we're speaking hypothetically, and I contend to you it's not, you could submit that to the town. But until such time as the town accepts this as a map or plat, it's not dedicated. It's not dedicated. And the person or group who are submitting it, they've got a period of time in which they can withdraw that. Well, as you look at this, it's got lines on it, it's got purported streets, and there are some of those streets that are in existence, no question about that. But what is it? It says, "Map one of the C.A. Lynn estate." Most of you probably know, the Lynn family is quite well-known in these parts. And C.A. Lynn was one of the founders of this town. And you look on there, and it's, a survey was done by J.D. Justice, September the 1st, 1939. 1939. If you look at the death certificate of Mr. C.A. Lynn, what you discover is that Mr. Lynn's date of death is September the 30th, 1928. Over 10 years, 11 years before this plat ever came into being. Now, if you go along and look at Mr. Lynn, C.A. Lynn had eight children. At the time of his death, seven of those children were living. He had one granddaughter. And in his will, which I have a copy of, and I've got on the front part, Article 7, which I would submit to you is most pertinent to what your decision's going to be about, which is simply whether or not this is a street dedicated for public use. Let me read something to you. And just if I could summarize, in the earlier portions of this will, what he essentially says is, "I'm going to divide up all of my property to my seven children and my one granddaughter of my deceased son." He goes on to say it's going to divide up all his personal properties, interest in the mill stock, everything, to include his real estate. He puts several of his sons in charge as executors. He gives them the authorization to divide that up. He makes one comment that I'd submit to you is extremely interesting. In this item number seven. He said, "In the event that one or more of my children should want certain portions of real estate and agree upon a price with the others, then my executors are hereby vested with authority to execute title to them." That's significant. That's significant because what C.A. Lynn intended was not to develop real estate. What C.A. Lynn intended was to allow his children to divide up the land. That's why when we look at the, this C.A. Lynn estate, it's not talking about Lynnville development. Now, when I first moved here some 86 years ago and started practicing up there on the corner, on the Lee Brothers store building, I, you know, I heard about Lynnville. And y'all know I live over there, live over in the far corner. And I've heard about Lynnville. This is not Lynnville. It's C.A. Lynn estate. If you go back and you begin to look at what happened, this is the most interesting deed that I found. It was a deed from Mr. J.P. Lynn. Now, J.P. Lynn, when you look at the date on this, this deed was June of 1922. He actually received this deed to the property well before his father died. I don't know what was going on with the Lynn folks, but J.P. Lynn, uh, he had the respect of his father. The house was built there. He was living there with his family, from what I understand. But he never even recorded this deed until 1937. Even after his father's died, he didn't rush up to the register deeds office to get it recorded. I'm assuming because his other siblings had not gotten their portions. This thing began to drag on, obviously, and what we began to see was April 18th, 1938. Here's another one. April 18th, 1938, property is deeded out. The significance of this deed is twofold. Number one, it's well before the C.A. Lynn estate map, okay? And it's the Ida Lynn Corrier. Now, if you look at the C.A. Lynn estate map, you'll see the name Ida Lynn Corrier. And I may be mistaken, but I, I think that's about where Tony Corrier's property, at least now, right now, his house. Ida Lynn Corrier. Now, that's not given a lot number because it was long before the survey in the C.A. Lynn's estate map was ever drafted. But the other thing that's really important about this deed is this. When you look at it, where he gives the language, typically found where property is being given to someone, it says this. "A valuation placed on the premises described below and pursuant to said will, the valuation of them, they give the dollar amount." Clearly, this was for the purpose of fulfilling the intent of the will to allow them to get property. There's also, and there's actually, and I don't believe in beating a dead horse to death, but we can go through. There's a second one. That one's to, uh... Here's a third one, Old Lynn Wright. Here's Elizabeth Jane Lynn. That would have been the one that's right across the street, the big white house. When I moved here, Claude Williams lived there. That's what I refer to it, but I, it was, uh, it was built, uh, I know Mr. D.C. Lynn Jr., he tells me that was built for his cousin and he constructed it. It has the language, same language, that it was pursuant to the will and the valuation was agreed upon. So, what I would submit to you is this is, first of all, not a public street. And if it's not a public street, then what is your question tonight? Your question tonight is to look at what has been proposed to you. And if it's, this is not a public street, and if you look at your subdivision ordinance, it's very clear. The only way you can, you can have up to four, if they're all on a public street. What they're proposing is lining these lots up and down on what is not a public street. So they're already in non-compliance. This opinion was offered by me early on in the process. And I don't deny for one minute that in the last number of years, I've been left out of a lot of things. Thank God. But the first time I was asked about this question, I responded just as I've responded to you tonight. Said, "No, it's not a public street. It never has been." Now, this is not the first time this issue's come up, and I've said that. Gene Beaver, Marshall Murphy came to me. And they were talking to me about this situation. And I said, "Well, the law provides many ways for a street to be closed." One can be, you can go before your town council and have the street withdrawn. I said another way, and Marshall Murphy built in acquisition of gas right-of-ways for many years out in the Midwest and Oklahoma. And he, we talked, he asked me about the mutual conveyances. We used to do it in North Carolina called a strongman deed. Now we refer to it as simply cross deeds. You acquire this property that is unclaimed through adverse possession by cross-claimed deeds. And the purpose of the deeds is to check or to eliminate or limit the wait time that you hold that property from 21 years to seven years. That's why folks do it. In 19, July of 1998, Marshall Murphy and Gene Beaver executed such a deed. Remember, tell me. There is another street that appears on the, uh, appears on the, on the C.A. Lynn estate that a lawsuit was actually drawn about. And understand that, I'm telling you tonight, this is not a public street. And understand that, I'm telling you tonight, this is not a public street, okay? And I'm gonna ask that you make your decision based on the fact that it's not a public street. There are other things that can be talked about and can be argued, but what I would submit to you is that from where we stand tonight, it is inappropriate to necessarily talk about all those things, and let's just stand on the, the proposition that this is not a public street. I mean, all these other things that we are enticed to talk about, they're going to say, "Well, you know, you acknowledged it was a street, because you've been talking about all these other things." We're saying, "No, it's not a public street." And what you've submitted to us is not in compliance with our subdivision ordinance. And as Shelley was pointing out, there are two separate things when you're talking about a subdivision ordinance, and whether something is zoned R8 or otherwise. Subdivision ordinance is, and when they get to be over, four, and you can only have four if you're on a public, publicly maintained thoroughfare. Here, it's not public, I forgot what the distance is on the front there of Zion Street, but I don't think, well, I won't say. Here's another thing I want to point out. When you look at the lots in question, who did those lots go to? Well, they went to Pearl Elf Works. Pearl got her deed October the 9th, 1939. It talks about beginning of lots 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, 25, names lots, but then it goes immediately, then it goes immediately into a meets and bounds description. And what does it say? It says, "Beginning at, beginning at the edge of Laurel Street and Lynn Mills Line, met with Laurel." It starts back towards the back of the property, where it abuts to the mill company. As I said, Mr. Lynn was owned, had a part ownership in the mill, and everything was based on what they knew from the mill. When you read through it, if you look at most legal descriptions, here's something else. When you look at most legal descriptions, as you begin to read the meets and bounds description, what attorneys will most often do is they'll tell you, passing a state at, and they'll give you a number, 100 feet, 200 feet, whatever. If you look at this C.A. Lynn map, what you'll see is a perimeter, and you'll see a course and distance around the perimeter, in certain areas. What I would submit to you is they did the perimeter drawing for large portions of this property, took like you would on a computer nowadays, they can divide it up and then allow people to pick property up. That's what happened. It was like as if you had a hundred-acre farm, and everybody, four kids, dude, they were gonna get 25 acres a piece, we didn't want them to fuss too much about who was gonna get what, find a piece of property, and you put the numbers in a hat and you drew them out. If you look at the distribution for each of these eight children, you would think one person would get a piece of property, a lot, and they would get all the contiguous of lots that surround them. That's not the case. That's not the case. That's why it suggests to me that you may be able to pick a certain number and then the rest was purely random. Because when I, I've done a breakdown, I'm bad. I've done all of this because I was asked the question, and then I kept getting beat over the head with, "Well, this, what, what's this? This is a division of an estate, it's what it says it is." No lots in here were sold for the purpose of the development. And I would submit to you that that's what you should begin in your discussion. Is this a public street? And I'm telling you, it's not. Now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locklear. Can we have a little discussion between us?
Well, I'm gonna ask this to you, because I proposed it to Shelley, okay? Why is it that this very map is being used as evidence that this is being properly developed by Landis subdivision ordinance?
You're already watching your favor.
No, I'm just, exactly, that's what I'm saying, I'm just asking.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you.
Why did it come from our town hall?
Maybe you had folks doing things they didn't know what they were doing.
That's what I want to hear.
Okay? And maybe when they heard what they didn't want to hear, they didn't follow what they heard, the advice had been given.
Same with you, sir.
Well, that's neither here nor there, that's water under the bridge.
Thank you.
But I will tell you, as chairman of this planning board, and after looking at the evidence, and after hearing what Mr. Locklear has brought to us tonight, that I'm not willing to approve this. And I would highly entertain the motion to disapprove this. Can send it to the board? Is our disapproval?
I would, uh, I would second time disapproval based off of it not being upon the road. Absolutely. I'm gonna make a motion, sorry. I'm gonna make a motion to disapprove this.
I'm gonna stop at that. Let's, um, let's go on, Mr. Locklear, present. The planning board does not recommend the approval of this preliminary plat for Laurel Garden. And it's due to the evidence that Mr. Locklear has brought forth regarding that not being Oh.
All in favor?
All in favor. That's a motion. Aye. You need to disapprove? Set order.
Well, we can, if that's what you want. I mean, this is his job, like his only mistress, the excellent audience in this town, I mean...
I'm waiting to put this down.
Hey, what's the matter? He had a petition, I guess. I guess, or, or this is a relative, I think it has a paper.
I was waiting on you to get cut out. Okay, our next item is new business. I don't know of any new business. We're more nervous, maybe? I will entertain the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anya Potts? Good night.
Let me turn off the lab feed.